Good evening, everybody. Chair Broneal is not able to attend this evening due to a work piece that ended up being an emergency this afternoon at work for him. So I'm going to turn it over to the vice chair, Sue Pike. And I do apologize for my attendance at home tonight. I had a procedure on my back today and I'm not allowed to drive. So home I am. Sue, over to you.
This meeting is being recorded.
Okay, it is 6:30 and we'll call the meeting to order. Do we do comments from the audience first or pledge?
We'll start with Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay, just making sure.
Thank you.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now we'll do comments from the audience, please.
Thank you. Did anyone get anything in writing?
Did not receive any.
Okay. Then we'll move on to any additions to the agenda?
I do not have any this evening.
Okay. Routine business items, approval of the minutes from September 10th, 2020.
We'll need a motion. Thank you. That's a motion from Chris Davy.
Second.
Rhea seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion, comments, corrections? Hearing none. Do we have a vote to approve them? If you approve the minutes, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, minutes approved. Committee reports. I was on the curriculum committee. We met on Wednesday and, or Tuesday, sorry. And we had a description of a potential personal finance two K course for next year. That sounds really promising and we're hopeful that happens. There's also a search for a music theory textbook. And we also had an update on how the staff is addressing standards that were not fully met in the previous year, which is going very well. Sarah, did you want to add anything to that? Okay. Finance committee?
Right. Okay, so the budget is 15% expended and coronavirus is an ever-changing landscape. And I'd like Kristin just to review a few transfers that happened.
Sure, thank you, Anne. So we have a, we needed to get an online remote access for Spanish text. It was just a transfer from BCS to BHS. Again, same thing for, from BCS to BHS. And then an online French instruction for grade eight. It's just a, from one line to another for BCS. And that is for the program that we are using for eighth grade French at this time, due to the fact that we do not have a teacher at this time. The teacher is out. Funding for testing materials. Again, it was just inline transfers, reclassification from Bolton High School to Bolton Center School for instructional supplies, equipment reclass from BCS to replace Chromebook cords, just from one line to another, and additional wireless mics for teachers to use when wearing masks. So our remote learners can hear from one line to another at BCS. And then additional funds to cover the cost of high-power portable wireless speakers for PE so that the kids can hear. Again, that was a reclass as well. Or move from one line to another, I apologize. And that is not for transfers. Are there any questions? Can't see everybody, so.
I have a question, Kristin.
Thank you, Chris. Go ahead.
Are there any updates on the reimbursement process from the state for COVID expenses?
So that's coming later in my report tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. We can move on to our student reps report.
I'm not sure if Emily's on this, so I'll go first. So the seniors are preparing for the SAT next week, which is being held on Wednesday, the 14th. The boys soccer team is 1-2 and the girls soccer team is 0-3. And their next games will be held tomorrow. Boys playing at Coventry, girls playing at, against Coventry. And then spectators for the sports games, there's only allowed outdoor events with a limit of two spectators per athlete. And those spectators will bring their own chairs this.
Thank you, Jack. Um. Okay, I don't know that I can't see everybody right now, but I don't think our other student is on.
No, she couldn't make it tonight.
Yeah, thank you. We need to go back.
I was just going to say we need to go back to the finance committee.
Yes, please, for transfers, so.
So we need a motion to accept the transfers for September.
September.
Rhea makes a motion to accept the transfers.
Thank you, Rhea. Second.
Got it, I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. If you approve the transfers, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstained? Okay, that motion carries. Jack, I am sure you have things to do tonight, young man. You do not need to stay on if you don't want to. But thank you. Thanks, Jack. Do we have any community meeting reports? Nothing. Okay. Superintendent of Schools report. Great, thank you. I'd like to turn it over to Cassel and Deb Wagner and Heather Plord for an update on food services, please.
Hi, I'm Heather Plord. I'm the Director of Food Services for EastCon. And as you know, I oversee the Bolton Food Service Program. So we put a little presentation together to kind of give you an oversight of where we left off last year and kind of how we've jumped into this year. So as you see, we projected, the projected revenue last year was 257,000. We landed at 227,000. Considering COVID and as you'll see going through the emergency meals, actually really helped us considering we were able to stay at, I mean, stay collecting reimbursements from the federal government for feeding the families and the students of Bolton. So you can see the projected all the way down and then the actual. So we, where we really felt sure was the actual sales. And that was because of the closure of schools. Once we closed schools, we couldn't sell out of cart or any of the cash deals that we did. But our reimbursements went up based on the free, excuse me, the reimbursements being fully free. So we got free reimbursement dollars for every meal that we were able to distribute during March through June. So as you can see during school, how many meals we sold. And then we continued to distribute meals through the end of June. And we did almost 18,000 more meals during closure. So that was pretty impressive. So in total, I mean, you can see the numbers. The staff worked really, really hard and got a lot of kids fed. It was an average about 100 students a day that we fed out of Bolton. Seven days a week, we're receiving breakfast and lunch out of the Bolton kitchen. So that's impressive. Unfortunately, because we didn't land exactly where we wanted to, we ended up in a deficit. But considering what we've all gone through in the last several months, $4,000 or $4,500 almost in a deficit is pretty fantastic, considering we got to pay all of our employees, the entire contracted wage, for their annual agreement, regardless of hours worked. So that was awesome. And they still got to feed people. We kept safe, we did all of that. So I do a lot of this with a lot of districts. And like I said, no one likes to be in the rears. But considering what we've gone through and what we've, what we're still up against, 4,000, you know, shy of $5,000 isn't, isn't a horrible loss. And they, and like I said, we got to keep all of our staff whole. They all got paid. And that's pretty, you know, like I said, it's great considering what people are going through right now and how many other people have been laid off. So there's that. There's a little picture of some of our school lunch heroes and some of the bulk meals that they were preparing during the pandemic. So just a little shout out to them and a thank you for all their hard work. So whether you know or not, we did run the, well, I'm sure you do, but we ran the Seamless Summer Program through July and August as well. The government allowed us to continue to do so. Feeding families in districts that wouldn't normally qualify or be eligible to feed during summer. So we did that through July and August. And then we got prepared to go right back into running the National School Lunch Program, which is what we were told we had to do. On August 31st, the federal government came out and released the mandate that we can feed continually through December, free breakfast and lunch for everybody. That means anybody in the town of Bolton or even outside, 18 and under, breakfast and lunch, seven days a week, which is a huge benefit to our community. So that went into effect the first day of school on September 2nd. So a little bit of next this year's budget, our active budget right now. We projected, when we did our budget projections, it was probably right at the beginning of COVID, I would say. So we really had no idea what, how we were going to land last year and even really how to clearly look at what this year was going to do. And we still don't have a clear idea. So we haven't reworked the budget, but this is what we landed and are projected. But I have a feeling that based on, we're not running with all the staff we did. We should have staff savings. We're selling, we're going to have free meals. So lower expenses for food costs, less participation. So it's really hard to say where we are right now or where we're going to do. But this was all done pre-COVID. So we really do need to look at that once we got a few operating months under our belt to see what the participation is going to look like and where we would need to make adjustments in the budget. So we'll be working on that in the next, you know, coming months. A little bit of a comparison at the end of September, where we were last year or this year. It's not too drastic, based on expenses are lower, revenues lower. But considering we have no idea how this is going to roll this year, we're hopeful that we can continue to feed in this manner. There's actually, there's talks at the federal level now to continue the Seamless Summer Program through the end of June, which would really be a tremendous benefit to all families. So we're hopeful that will, you know, that will be pushed through. But for right now, we have the ability to feed children 18 and under, free breakfast and lunch, seven days a week, holidays, vacations, all of that through December 31st. So I think that that's going to be a huge benefit to the kids in school, the kids that are remote learning, families that are just home. And it's what we're going to do. We're just going to keep feeding families. So what we're doing now is we're, we're still, Bolton is still running the hybrid model. So we have food prepared for the days that the children are in school. And we have days of pickup for the remote learners on their off days of hybrid and their fully remote days. So that means like the fully remote learner. So we're feeding all of our students and they have access as needed. And we'll continue to do so. And like I said, it's not necessarily just for students. So this opportunity is for any Bolton family 18 and under to access these meals. So we're doing it two days a week, seven days worth of meals distributed in those two days. So it covers the time that the kids are in school and then when the kids are out of school. Once we go to an all-in model, we'll be adjusting that to, adjusting and adding an additional day to Fridays only for pickup for five-day-a-week in-school learners to pick up two days' worth of meals on Fridays to cover them through Saturday and Sunday. So again, regardless of where you are in school or out of school, you'll have access to meals seven days a week. So like I said, I kind of reviewed this, but meals will be free when they come back in, holidays too. The distributions are Tuesdays and Fridays. We have a link. Hopefully it's, we'll continue to encourage participation. I know it's a little bit low right now. And I think families need to get a little bit more secure and feel safe about meals outside the home. So we understand that. So the more successful we are in continuing our best practices, you know, and showing families that we're doing everything we can to keep everybody safe, I feel that the participation will continue to increase. And as the need increases, again, I think that as we see more people out of work and people falling on hard times, having these options available to them is a tremendous benefit to the community. So once again, we're very uncertain about what this year's going to bring, what next week will bring, we don't know. So we're just going to continue best practices. Safety is really our number one concern. It's making sure that the staff and the students are as safe as possible. We've really enforced the safety of our staff. I know I have for, in all of my schools, for the reason being that the lunch ladies can't do their job like we're doing our meetings. They can't do what we can do remotely. So their essential work really has to be done in person and can't, you know, it can't jeopardize the entire program if we have to close a kitchen down due to illness. So we're trying and we've been very successful since March to keep all the staff safe. So I'm very proud of that and I'm very happy that everybody's following best practices. We're going to continue to follow, meeting all the regulations like we always do and promote the program to encourage that more people have access to it. So we're just going to continue really doing what we're doing and hope that we're going to get more and more people to participate and that we're able to, you know, provide nourishing meals to families that need it, so.
Thank you. I want to take this opportunity to publicly thank Heather, Debbie, our ladies in the cafeteria. They have been nothing short of amazing. They are heroes. They have been there every day since this started, all summer long, feeding our families. And, and we owe them a huge debt of gratitude. We really do. Are there questions? Chris, I see your hand.
Thank you, Kristin. Yeah, I would second your comments. It's great to hear everything that's been going on. And absolutely kudos to Heather and the staff. You really have been doing great work. And I'm very happy that our students are able to be fed. I'm wondering if I'm gathering the correct message. It sounds like revenues to the food program, the only source of revenues at this point are from the federal government reimbursing for the free meals. If that is the case, then I wonder if that message can be gotten out to families in a bit more clear of a way. Because I know for myself, I've kind of felt like, well, I don't want to take part or have my daughter take part in the food program because I don't want to be burdening the program or costing the town or the district money. But it sounds like by not participating in the program, we might be costing the district money. So I just want to make sure I have that correct and ask if there's anything we can do to, you know, help increase participation.
I think that we just want to make sure that it's advertised appropriately. We kind of slow-walked how we were advertising it because though the, the federal government told us on August 31st that we could do this, the state of Connecticut was finding out exactly when I was. So they still, so though the regulations or the ruling will come from the federal government, then it's up to each individual state on how that's going to look for us. So we had to wait. Like we, we just finished up like paperwork this week. So we've been kind of quiet, a little bit quieter than normal just because things at this level were changing more. How to explain it?
It's, it's like, it's like every day in school for COVID. It changes constantly and we're just getting final rules now on what we're allowed to do and communicate. So once we're certain, we know from the state exactly what we can communicate, we will be doing so.
And the waivers were just approved, so we are. So now we can put it like on the town website. Like I said, it's not just for the students. It's anybody 18 and under that can access. You don't need to preorder it. We go right back into what we were in the spring, where you can drive up and say, we have four kids and we need food or we'd like food. It's not even about need. We have families that are really enjoying just having a little normalcy, that the kids enjoy the school meals. That's the kind of emails I get or I hear. My kid really loves the pizza day, so when I get to bring it home, it's awesome. So there's pieces of that too. So I guess we should, you know, and try to pull away that it's free for those or it's not just for those who need it. It's really, it's free for all.
Everybody.
Yeah. And it does benefit the program tremendously because of the amount of reimbursement we get for those meals.
So you'll be seeing something come out next week once we are certain, we know what the deal is and we will get something out to everybody, Chris, to your point.
Great, thank you for explaining.
Are there any other questions? If you could say that you have one out loud, that would be great because I can't see everybody.
Rhea has a question.
Thanks.
What, what is the percentage of families that are actually who's taking advantage of this program now? Do you know?
Don't have their actual percentage right now. I do know that our participation is a little bit lower than we would like. But again, it's a little bit difficult because we have the kids on, only in school a couple of days. So I think we'll see a little bit of a difference if and when we move to an all-in or even an all-out because of, it gets a little bit clearer that way. But I would say like 100 kids we were getting over the spring. So that's about, what do you have, about nine, what are you at, 900 or so in total?
Close to, so 750, 750.
That's even better. So you're a higher percentage of those students that are actively participating. But once we run, you know, a couple of months, then we like to look at the numbers and more participation. And that's where we'll be able to gauge better and then target where. Like I said, we'll see it. We're not seeing it in any school, in school participation right now.
So when the students are attending school and they have lunchtime, everybody's getting free meals if they don't. They want.
They want it. Same like in the, you know, in their morning meeting, they can say that they have like access to hot lunch. It's available to everybody. But again, a lot of families are still bringing in lunch. Just maybe apprehension. It's understandable. This is, you know, we're all navigating, you know, through the pandemic. So again, I think more and more that the more the kids are in the building and the more that they see the other kids eating or that they want. No, that's how we'll get that to grow, for sure.
And breakfast.
Oh, and breakfast too, because currently breakfast is also free for everybody. So that number will start to climb as well when families realize that they can have access to that. Or when the kids, you know, they do know, we've been telling them, but you just needed to kind of catch on. We only had very few kids participate in years past in Bolton for breakfast. So now with it being free, it really gives us the opportunity to promote the program so that when it is no longer free, we still have people that are interested in paying $1.25 for a breakfast.
Are there other questions?
Thank you, though.
Thank you. All right, hearing none. Ladies, thank you very much. Deb and Heather, appreciate it very much. And kiss those grandkids, Deb.
I will, thank you. I enjoy doing this immensely.
You're doing a great job and we appreciate it. Thank you guys very much. Good night.
Bye, good night.
Next, we are on to an update from Bolton High School, Mr. Rosselli.
Good evening, everyone. Here is a snapshot of our, our numbers of students who have chosen the fully remote parallel. And overall, we're, you know, we're about a 2% increase for students staying home. And that represents really only four students. And we've had some students return while others go out. And some of our subgroups have increased, while others have decreased. But that 2% is the, is the overall for that. I'll pause there before I go to the next slide. If there's any questions on any of those numbers. I'll bring you the same chart each week, excuse me, each month, just with updated numbers. So we continue to see a lot of success with a hybrid model. Students are spaced out apart pretty, pretty well, even in our small rooms. And I'm very proud of both our teachers and students who are doing a great job of managing remote at the same time that we're doing in school. And teachers have used Wednesday afternoons, as well as our weekly PLCs, to share some really great ideas with each other, some programs, some successes and some struggles. So our professional collaboration continues, even in these crazy times. Several weeks ago, I had a lengthy call with Charlene from Charlene's Portrait Studio, who is our, our school photographer. And we reflected on the success of the senior portraits that were taken last year to give the students a special memory, but also those, those portraits became the cornerstone of the digital graduation ceremony that we put together. So we looked at how we managed to do that in a safe way, but also get quality photos. And we developed a plan for our nine through 11, nine through 11th graders. So I know a lot of schools are not doing underclassmen photos or haven't tackled that yet. But again, based on what we learned about doing it, we have, we've done it. And we've had one day on Tuesday, Monday, and our, with the second half of the alphabet, we'll be here tomorrow. Our remote learners have been invited after school, one, you know, one at a time to come in the building as well. So we've embraced them as well. So we're, we're excited about that. And Charlene has a completely touchless procedure for ordering. And the images are actually getting drop shipped to families. And my big motivation, I think it's great if families purchase pictures, but really is to, you know, maintain the quality of the yearbook by having those quality photos in there. As Jack mentioned, we have some new rules in place for spectators. And that's home games only. No, none of our Bolton families can travel to other towns and only outdoor. So for volleyball, we've actually have a Zoom system in place for families to watch the volleyball games. I was actually sitting in a parking lot waiting for one of my children yesterday evening, whether it was ballet or what it was. But I tuned in and got to watch a little bit of the volleyball game over Zoom, so.
So I'd also like to share that the same is true for spectators from other districts, right? Spectators are only allowed at their home events for N, triple C.
Correct.
Athletic events.
Yep. And my last item is, as you may recall, last October, we had our decennial visit from the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. And actually for us, it was 11 years because they bumped us a year for, that's a long story too. After many delays and frustrations, we finally received the final report over the summer. And I'm happy to announce we're re-accredited. The Bolton High School team was very reflective and self-effacing and generated a very long list of things we wanted to improve. And we'll be working on those items in advance of our two-year report. Actually, we have actually completed some of the items on the to-do list before the visit was over. And for some details on that, I'd like to introduce our Chairs of the NEAS Steering Committee to share some information. It's Jen Carvalho and Abby Sacco.
Hello. Yeah, so as Joe mentioned, we finally received our accreditation report. I believe it was mid to end of June when we finally received the official report. Obviously, the COVID situation and closures, you know, interrupted not only what we were doing, but what the commission was doing and delayed all of their meetings on our status. So we apologize for the delay in getting the information to you, but it took a while to get to us. So just to review the process, as Joe mentioned, it was a year ago this week that the visiting team was at our school for three days, three and a half days, during which they collected a great deal of evidence to evaluate us on the standards that you see on the screen. So the Standards for Accreditation focus on two major areas. We have teaching and learning standards, which look at our core values and beliefs about learning as a district and school, our curriculum, our instruction and assessment. And then it also reviews support standards, which focus on our school culture and leadership, our school resources, and then the community. our school resources, and then the community resources for learning. Um, as they put together their their judgment as to whether or not we are accredited, they are pulling evidence from not only our self-study that we as a faculty completed, but they met with groups of parents, they met with students, they shadowed students in classes, they reviewed samples of student work, um, tours the facility, um, observations of classes. So it really was a plethora of evidence that they that they drew from to make their final conclusion. And as you will see on the screen, they voted to award that our that Bolton High School continues its accreditation in the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. So we are very happy about that. They, as as part of this accreditation process, they released a final report. It is about ninety-seven pages long. So we are going to do our best to highlight some of the commendations in that report tonight, some of the recommendations. But we will say that the entire report is posted on the Bolton High School webpage. It's a little bit below the picture of the graduating class on there. You can click on the link if you would like to read the entire ninety-seven pages. There was also a copy will also be forwarded to the town and a copy is forwarded to the Connecticut State Department of Education. So it it exists in many places or will soon exist in many places. But the easiest place right now for all of you to access it and read it in all its glory is on the school website. But as I said, we're going to pull out some highlights tonight.
All right, so some of the commendations that we received from the visiting committee was the fact that we have a collaborative and a research-based um, dynamic process to identify what the core values were, um, the beliefs in the 21st century expectations we have for our, um, all of our students, as well as um, the adoption of the mastery-based approach for student learning and that we give the students multiple opportunities um, to achieve proficiency. The visiting committee also um, commended us on the um, achievement of the standards in the focus of the instruction um, towards those mastery-based approaches. Um, the investment in Atlas, which is the curriculum management platform that um, is used for us to organize and document and um, keep track of all of our our school curriculum, as well as the district-wide effort to identify the school's portrait of a graduate. Um, other commendations were on the impressive array of opportunities that we provide on the students to um, demonstrate the that they are able to um, master the transferable skills through different co-curricular activities and um, interschool athletics. Also, the great degree of caring that the teachers um, display and and have um, in their relationships with the students. Um, the fact that we have um, many opportunities that are afforded to the teachers for us to collaborate with one another, especially in our um, professional learning community meetings, um, our our PLCs, and that the school's commitment to providing adequate resources um, so that we are supported in delivering our curriculum. And again, that focus on the vision of a Bolton graduate and using that to progress towards those transferable skills.
Additional commendations that they they um, highlighted in the report was the dedicated and qualified professionals who support our students across the board. So, you know, not just the teachers, our paraprofessionals, our school nurse, our librarian. For every adult in the building, they really were impressed with what they saw. Um, they were happy with the use of a universal use of Google Classroom by all teachers. And remember, this was before we even shifted to distance learning. So um, you know, they recognized this even back last October. Uh, they obviously highlighted the the additions and the renovations made to Bolton High School from the last NEAS visit that was eleven years prior. Um, and anecdotally, they were just impressed the entire visit. We kept hearing um, just how beautiful they thought the building was, how well-maintained and clean it was. So they just, they were really blown away by just the quality of our space. They commended the budgetary support given to the schools by the Bolton community, the district strategic plan that carried the district through 2020. Obviously, we have a new plan now, but they were impressed with the old one. Uh, the safe and respectful welcoming atmosphere that they observed that's conducive to learning. Our connections block, which acts as a bit of an advisory period that gives students opportunities for individualized attention and some personalized learning. The broad range of, you know, clubs and activities and athletics that we offer and the time built into the district calendar that supports professional development as well. Next slide, Joe, okay.
So along with the accommodation, we also got um, some recommendations. And the um, recommendations were given based on the evidence that the visiting committee um, saw, but also what um, was identified in our self-study. So we had actually figured out that there would probably be some of these recommendations um, listed after the visit based on um, what we had seen ourselves as we were um, going through the self-study process and had already begun trying to to kind of think about how we are going to um, attack some of these recommendations for the next two-year plan. So some of those recommendations were that um, providing adequate formal time and resources um, for the teachers to reflect on the application measurement and being able and um, revision of those transferable skills. So being able to use um, the data and really and the rubrics and having time to um, dig into those in order to to revise um, the transferable skills as as needed. Um, as well as developing a process to review the curricula and um, the assessment maps to ensure that there are multiple opportunities for the students to meet all um, the learning expectations in across content areas and courses, um, as well as providing professional development opportunities so that um, teachers can work together to increase student engagement in the classroom, again, across um, the curriculum. Other recommendations included um, the implementing the use of transferable skill rubrics consistently and with fidelity with all students so that um, the school can assess um, the whole um, sorry, the whole individual student achievement for those learning expectations. The the idea of also establishing a formal process um, to report the individual and whole school um, process towards achieving those transferable skills um, to the student and um, as well as the school community. And um, the other recommendation is ensuring teachers are consistently communicating to students um, prior to um, each unit of study, what those objectives are going to be that they'll be studying in that in that unit um, so that they're aware of what they'll be assessed on.
Additional recommendations, and I will add that this may seem like a lot of recommendations, but really the main goal of a of a NEAS visit and and the self-study process is to help districts grow. So these are this, having a list, a long list of recommendations is not a bad thing. This is just sort of guiding principles to help us as we move forward to become an even better school than we already are. Um, so continuing on with our recommendations, um, they'd like to see us dedicating ongoing professional development time for teachers to work collaboratively and ways to um, revise and analyze some of our um, formative, summative and common assessments. They'd like to see a more formal process to ensure that students have adults uh, in their lives who know them really well and can help them with their acquisition of specific transferable skills. They'd like to make it possible for students to have regular access to the library media center during the school day throughout the week and ensure that staffing levels in the library are sufficient to accommodate student use. Uh, create and increase efforts to our open choice in Columbia families to engage them in school and community activities. Develop long-term planning to upgrade and make the athletic field complex safe. Uh, specifically, they pulled out in the report the poor drainage on the soccer field, the lack of track and field facilities. Um, and they highlighted the tennis courts, which, as we know, is is um, being addressed already at this time. Um, provide consistent funding source to support technology and its integration into instruction and explore alternatives to expand or improve the performance venue of the high school.
So now that we have the report back and we have um, all of the recommendations, the next steps um, that we'll have to do is submit the two-year um, progress report, which will be due September fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Um, and that report will respond to the recommendations that um, we just kind of explained briefly and what we're doing to address those recommendations. And the school's accreditation status will be reviewed again um, based on the progress of the two-year report.
And and I just want to add, having been through um, those reports, I arrived um, when it was time for a two-year report. And uh, you don't have to have met every recommendation and fixed all those issues. You just need to kind of respond to them. So for example, some of them are going to be easy, rebuilt tennis courts. Right, done. Some will be, we're continuing to investigate or we are working on. My first two-year report was a building project has started, but everything you said about our facility is still true. I'll see you in two more years, right? So um, this is not, that whole list of recommendations, as Jen said, is a is a good thing for us. It's a list that we self-generated to guide us, um, but it's not uh, what needs to be done in the next two years. I just want to kind of be clear on that, too.
Um, and again, the progress that we've already made um, towards some of these recommendations. And again, it was based on the self-study and the recommendations from the visiting committee. Um, and again, because we had done the self-study, we had an idea of what some of these recommendations were going to to be. So we had already kind of started to make a plan as to how to address many of these. So what we have done um, since the visit is updated PowerSchool to you to be able to communicate mastery towards the transferable skills on specific individual assignments in real time. So the students are getting those reports when they complete assessments um, that have transferable skills tied to them. We're also um, have developed reports for families and students to um, communicate overall achievement of the identified transferable skills. And um, we improved our efforts to utilize the connections period for um, a more formal student goal-setting activities, as well as time to review student progress with them. The connections teachers were able to really take the time to um, work with the individual students, which is about nine to ten students that that they have, um, to review their grades in all of their classes and talk about, well, what kind of goals do you want to set for um, this marking period? And and we'll check in at midpoint and trying to figure out um, and really support those those students and um, giving the students an opportunity to also reflect themselves. And we began to analyze and improve our scoring criteria um, and are able to use that now to also continue to measure the mastery for those transferable skills.
Um, we've explored ways to utilize our PLC, our professional learning community structure to reflect on how we measure, how we revise our transferable skills, our application. Um, we were kind of in the thick of really doing this before we left school in March, so we're hoping to to get back to that soon. Uh, we continue to use department meeting times and select professional and development time to align our curricula to the transferable skills and develop assessments that measure the mastery of transferable skills and tag and upload all that into Atlas so that we can map where any gaps may be. Um, and we were working last year in our PLC meetings to explore the use and communication of learning targets, which was one of the recommendations they had. Um, I will say, or we get to the questions portion, um, NEAS has already released new standards that when we go through this process, again, there's a whole new slew of standards that we will be evaluated on. One of those is looking to have a portrait of a graduate. So in terms of progress made, we're actually ahead of the game on the next batch of standards in that we already have our portrait of the graduate defined. And when the deputy director of NEAS came to meet with us before the, you know, our annual visit or di- annual visit last year, um, she was completely blown away with the fact that we had already developed a portrait of a graduate and that wasn't even in the new batch of, it wasn't even in the standards that we were being assessed on yet. So uh, we've made progress and in some ways we actually are ahead of the game and the new batch of standards that we'll have to tackle nine years from now, so.
Along with the new standards, it's going to be a new process. We were the last group to go through it the the old way. It is going to be, um, it's reported to be more of an ongoing uh, interaction with NEAS as opposed to, you know, we'll see in ten years, except for a couple of written reports. So uh, it'll be interesting to see how that rolls out.
Before we take questions, I would just like to acknowledge and give tremendous kudos to Jen and Abby. Uh, chairing a NEAS visit is a very heavy lift for sure. Um, I don't think uh, the general public has any idea the amount of time, energy and work that goes in to a self-study and a preparation for a visit, the actual visit, and then waiting on pins and needles for the actual report. So we thank them. We are very grateful to them, to our staff, to Joe, to Christine for the tremendous effort done in this and very, very proud of the work that they are doing.
And I need to piggyback by saying, you know, we had some other folks on the steering committee, um, Mark Mashriky, uh, Maggie Klepper, and.
That's it.
That was it.
And you, Joe, yeah.
Yeah, and you, and you, Joe.
You know, and and lots of help from from Kristen and Sarah and Beth as well. Um, and the other little, which we can, we can look back and maybe smile now at the time we were not. About two weeks before the visit was to happen, the chairman, who had already come out, already met with us, done a bunch of work and already built relationships, um, and some impressions, um, had a had a serious medical issue and they put in a very last minute, very unprepared pinch hitter um, that resulted in in really Abby and Jen kind of doing things over and over and over again, um, November, December, January, February, March, April. So we kind of did the self-study like three times um, as a result of that. And that was just unfortunate circumstances, but you know, to Kristen's point, the chairs do a lot, but these guys did like five times that amount, so thank you.
Thank you.
Now, what questions do you have?
Joe will answer them.
You'll have to shout it out, gang, because I can't.
Mr. Davey, go ahead.
Thank you.
I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit more about the staff development, uh, continuing ed recommendations? I guess I was a little confused because I I seem to recall during the uh, when you were talking about the uh, kudos that we received, one of the things that they praised us for was the amount of staff development time and the efforts that we currently do in that area. And then there also seemed to be a lot of recommendations in that area and the the praise and the that didn't quite square. So I just wondered what.
My, my, my understanding, again, I large report, but from what I remember from from the ninety-seven pages is that they applaud the amount of time we have for professional development. I think the recommendations were in terms of other way, like ways we can maybe start to shift how we use that time to address some areas that we maybe haven't been addressing. Um, you know, we've been focusing a lot on a lot of the curricular pieces in our professional development that now that we're in a a much better place with that, maybe we can start shifting and, you know, looking at ways to use that professional development time to to diversify what we're, you know.
And and those were things that we said, you know, what the next thing we want to do as a staff is XYZ. And they turned it around and said, the recommendation is you do this. And and that's okay, we're not, our feelings aren't hurt because one of the the realities about NEAS, let's, so let's rewind the clock eleven years ago. NEAS came into Bolton and said, you need a building, right? And often NEAS groups come in and say, what is your agenda? What is it you need? So they, the reports often generate recommendations to kind of push agendas. In our case, it was our agenda that got reflected in the recommendation. So we're, we're very comfortable with all of those those pieces.
All right, thank you for explaining that uh, makes it much clearer in my mind. Uh, and then i- if I could, and I apologize because my computer froze and I had to restart. So I missed the end of the BHS update, but I did have a a question for Principal Maselli, if if I might. I noticed in the enrollment census that we were provided this month that the high school uh, population has decreased by ten in just last month. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about that.
Some of those were folks that moved away. Um, and some of those ten were students that I I don't think were correctly accounted for at the opening of school, which is not, it's not abnormal, like, hey, where's the kid, right? If school's open, you're still on the books from the previous year. And we don't exit them officially until there are certain steps that take place. So we've had some students move away for different reasons. Some of them good, some, you know, good choices, right? But that 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 number is is looks a little bit larger because of of the way things shook out. Because often um, we know at the end of a school year, hey, I'm gonna, we're gonna move, dad got relocated, whatever it might be. Well, the last time we really had those kinds of conversations with kids was in March. So um, we were carrying students on the books that we just, we didn't have a reason to take them off until we were back in school and they weren't here and we and we followed up.
Thank you for explaining. Thank you for explaining.
I have a question about the NIASK report. So I fully understand your explanation about how they take a lot of what you've done in your self-study and put that into the recommendations. My question is, were there any surprises that you had not anticipated?
Not, not, really, I don't think. I'm trying to think if there was anything that jumped out and I don't.
I will tell you, there, there, there were some in the original draft that, because they made no sense. They were, they were wrong. And, and that was part of the back and forth process. And as frustrated as I, I was with the process overall, I will say the executive, assistant executive director Allison Gary could not have been better. She spoke to me several times, she spoke to Kristen, and she was willing to, to keep working on the report until it was right. So if you'd asked me that at the first draft, I would say, oh, my gosh, where did that come from? But, you know, when it's all said and done, no, this is, this is our roadmap for the next, you know, five to eight years. And we're good with it.
Yeah, I think the only thing that might be slightly misleading is when they talk about the reporting of transferable skill data. I think, I think it was confusing. We tried to explain to them what we were doing when they were here. And I think we just, in all their meetings with different teachers, they didn't really have a clear sense of what exactly we were doing in Power School. So some of those recommendations, I personally feel read a little harsher than what reality is. But, you know.
Offer on that one particular piece, I think that our staff and what we are doing at the high school is light years above what most of the people who came in for this accreditation visit are currently experiencing in their districts. You know, you heard Jen talk about the next time around in 10 years, they're going to be looking at the portrait of a graduate. And as you know, we've been one of the leaders in the state. And, you know, Farmington being the leader because they've had one for like a decade. But, you know, we, we jumped on that bandwagon a few years ago. And prior to that, you know, we had really gone into the piece about the transferable skills. And I don't know, Jen and Abby, how long ago was that when I came to a meeting and said, hey, I think we ought to dive into this, can we give it a shot?
Yeah, that was five or six years ago now, I think. Yeah, five, five or so years, yeah.
Yeah, I think so, that is there too, to be honest.
And another good example is, one of the things it said about a report home to families about that, I handed them that report during their visit. It was something we had put in self-study because when we wrote the self-study six months before the visit, we didn't have it done, but we were working on it. We had it done by the time we were here. We handed it to them, we talked about it, but they still put it in as a recommendation. So it is what it is. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And thank you so much for all of your time that you spent on that.
Thank you. Are we okay in that library? I'm seeing some movement in some head, are we good or not?
Oh, I can't keep the lights on.
Enough movement in the library is the issue.
Okay, just checking, thanks. Are there other questions or comments? All right. Hearing none, thank you. Do we have one, Joe?
Nope, I think we're good. I can see everybody.
Okay, thank you. So now I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Safran for an update on BCS. And then about the summer learning adventures updates, Mr. Giardis, not with us tonight because he is home with his new baby boy and his wife and baby number one.
Yes, so we are ready. Here's our chart similar to Mr. Micali's, working and we will keep updating it. So we actually have, our numbers of students in the remote parallel track has decreased since the last month. Currently, we have 92 students that are participating. So that's 19% of our school population and is broken down. It did go by grade, so we've seen a few grades. As you'll notice, while kindergarten went up, it went up one. Every other grade, you know, kids have been coming back or our numbers have been changing. So we've had more students returning to school than are choosing to switch to remote in our building. Are there any questions about that chart before we move on?
I have a quick question, real quick. This is Ben. So what is the process if a student wants to go from strictly remote to come back to school? Is it, is it an application process? Can they come back instantly? How does that work exactly?
Well, what happens is they reach out to either their classroom teacher or myself or Mr. Giard, and the parent says, you know, I'm really interested, we're ready to come back. And what we do is really just begin a conversation with the classroom teacher to make sure that they're ready, they have the space that they need, they feel, and we try to get them in as soon as we possibly can.
But we did ask parents in our back-to-school plan to give us a week's notice. But to Ms. Safran's point, you know, we, once they tell us we want to come back, we try to do it as quickly as possible. But, you know, we can take up to that week from our perspective if that's what we need to do to make everything the way it needs to be to get them in. But we try to do it much sooner than that.
Right. And it, and a lot of times it also depends truthfully on what letter of the alphabet they are. If they tell us on one day and their cohort doesn't come again, I mean, they have to wait a little bit longer. Where if the teacher has spacing ready, we've had teachers just excited to get those kids back in the classroom. So they'll say, yes, tomorrow I'll take them. So, you know, we really just work together to be that partnership between school and home and doing what the families need, just as much as we support those that need to make a shift for whatever reason they need to. You know, we're all working together.
Awesome, yeah, that makes sense. Like my wife in some of her classes has four and some of her classes has 12. So it would make a difference on some days rather than others. So, cool, all right, thank you.
You're welcome. Well, and part of the process, much like high school, is we are really focused on student engagement in many ways. And so we meet weekly with the, the teachers at different levels, grade levels, PLCs at the middle school, just to continually talk about how we're teaching, how is our learning going? Are our students engaged? And we really are focusing on just making sure that any student that's struggling to engage with the learning, whether they're a remote student or a hybrid student that we're reaching out, we're connecting. So we've been spending a lot of time talking about that, looking at some of the different practices that we've been using. How do we, you know, this moving into a hybrid model is still new for all of us. As much as we learn so much about distance learning, this blend of having some in, some at home, some at home every day is still something that we've worked on. We've made a lot of changes, especially at the middle school over the last month regarding meets and having more opportunities for students to really, we're really encouraging them to attend their full day because it's a full day and we're putting out a full day of times and things for families or students to be involved with. Another change this year that we're seeing a lot of excitement from is the Seesaw and connecting with students at home. So we've increased the number of classes using the Seesaw platform. And that was something that the board supported last spring and we're still working with, especially in the area of specials. So in art, PE, music, depending on the grade level, they're really using that Seesaw. And it's allowing the teachers to really get access for the students and to see, because the students have the ability to videotape, take pictures, to provide audio. And it's helping the teachers a lot for the kids that are in hybrid or remote. So they've also noticed and shared with us that it's really also increased our students' communication skills as they will happily talk out to the camera. I think we're making a very good YouTube population. They will talk out to the camera their thinking, they'll hold up work, they'll explain it, they'll, you know, bring to life outside. I know our PE teachers are really, really excited. I mean, they have their students at home practicing their sit-ups and they're recording how many sit-ups they can get done. So the teachers are still seeing that learning as it's really hard to live stream PE out in the field. So they're feeling connected with their students, like they, they struggled to feel that in the spring. So we really want to thank the Board of Ed for that continued support with that learning and management system. And it's something that we're really looking forward to continuing having and using as we continue teaching throughout this year. We are also working with our staff to collaborate a lot on how we're going to be transitioning our students, especially our K-5 students into the building over the next few weeks. You know, we're looking at furniture and spacing. We're looking at how it's going to shift with the students no longer being hybrid and how the teaching is going to change to making sure that we're just really doing our best for all of our students. And we're continuing to collaborate with the middle school and looking at how do we provide a safe environment for all of our staff and students and quality education. But with that, technology has been a big part of our time. So we can now say that 100% of our students have access to technology and internet access. Mrs. Malinowski has been working hard as we get and we solve those problems day by day. I'd like us to stop getting warnings on losing power because I twitch every time the thought of us not having power, potentially not having Wi-Fi comes up. But, you know, we're working through it. And we've also started working in our K-5 classes. Many of the students have begun receiving Chromebook protective sleeves as they're, you know, getting used to bringing those devices back and forth to school. So we've been really excited about that. Are there any, I'll ask if there are any questions before I move on? All right, so then transitioning to very different, we are very excited to talk about and wrap up our summer adventures and learning at Bolton Center School. I did share with you, this with you, I believe in June, to kind of talk about what we were going to be launching for the summer. But Becky Sullivan is going to co-present with me, she's in here. And our instructional coach and we, she and I worked and we were planning this throughout all of last school year and really wanting to look at how can we motivate our students to continue learning over the summer. So with the shift to distance learning, it, it put a wrinkle and some changes into our plan. Our students had spent a lot of time on the computer. We were really mindful of that. We were also mindful of what our students maybe didn't practice or didn't have access to as much as they typically would have. So we really were thinking we need to get our students engaged even more than before. So we were excited to work on this.
And like Jessica had said, we did start planning this a year ago. And one of the reasons was over the last few years, we've seen a decline in the number of students participating and the opportunities we did have available, the state math challenge, the governor's reading challenge. So we really wanted to provide something that would encourage students to do that.
And we spent time throughout the year looking at research and other programs that were being done both within the state. We had the opportunity to listen to some things being done with some of the Kreg schools. We both attended a conference in December where we got to hear what one of the, another school is doing for math-related to keep the summer going. And we also talked with our teachers and we talked with parents and talked with the parents who are the ones home with the students over the summer and really wanted their feedback into what they were looking for. And we adjusted our plans up until those minutes based on what the parents were telling us they felt they could manage or what they were looking for to help their children over the summer. And, oh, go ahead, Becky.
No, is it my turn? You ready? Okay, so we did talk to the students as well. We had a couple of focus groups over Google meets asking kids what they would be interested in earning. They knew they would be earning raffle tickets. We also sent a survey out to students and we were able to share the prizes before school got let out in June. We did a quick little virtual assembly and the PTA did a great job with helping us to purchase all of the prizes. So we are so incredibly grateful to the PTA for their support in this.
And I have to say, there are many students that made the difference, seeing what they could get. I mean, that kept some of them going all summer long, so it was really wonderful. And when we, so we provided, I'll get to that part later. The students had the opportunity to do lots of different ways. So we really went for multiple platforms to try to give variety and options to families and students. What worked for you, what works in one house might not work for you there. So we were just trying to get engagement and can, and we'll build off of this as we continue with, it's not going away. So they had still the governor's reading and math challenges were options and we still promoted them. Mrs. Herrick, the library and media specialist, had started her own kind of reading challenge and she's noticed it. So we really pushed that out to our students. We designed, I learned, I learned to create a Google site that had just options for math games, reading activities. Mrs. Sullivan put podcasts on there. We broke it up by K-2 band, a 3-5 band and a 6-8 band, really trying to gear different ideas for the different ages. And we also had Buster's Challenges, which provided multidisciplinary activities across the different content areas. There are many still planned for the future, not as many, there are many planned, they're, they're there. I'm excited. And then we also did, this each student got a flat buster. And that is inspired, there's the Flat Stanley series in a few different schools. We got this idea from them and it was an idea of taking that character and our buster around with them. So you'll see a little bit about that.
And as Jessica said, we had lots of different ways that students could engage in their learning over the summer. And we also provided them with multiple platforms. So students were able to use Seesaw and students uploaded pictures. Some kids typed in a journal and some students did little videos. And we also had Google Classroom where students could just upload pictures to Google Slides. So, so that was excellent. And students in grades one through eight could all access their iReady personalized learning path as well. And we had a lot of students who engaged in that.
And it was definitely fun over the summer. I learned the other side of Seesaw and getting to reply and getting to comment. Mrs. Sullivan, I did, we had some teachers ask if they could be a part of it. So they'd go on and, you know, comment to the students and it'd be great. There was one point, students were talking to each other and complimenting each other's work, which we, you know, just hoped would happen and it did. Fourth graders too, so it was nice to see the big kids talking and complimenting each other's work. And then on Wednesday, September 23rd, we held our virtual assembly. And we livestreamed it out to many and it was very exciting. And we took a moment to congratulate a lot of the students that really pulled in a lot of tickets. And then we polled and we gave out a lot of prizes. And it's amazing, those students from the tiny little things to the big things, they were very excited. We've gotten reports that there was squealing, there might have been squealing in my house too, you know, listening. Students were cheering their friends on. The next day at school, kids knew who got what, so it was really exciting. And I think it definitely gave us motivation to hopefully, you know, we'll have a little bit more of an in-school kickoff this next year. Mr. Micali, can you? Yes, thank you. So we have some numbers for you. So we did have 93 students participate across K-8. And previously, last year, we had 23 students participate in the reading challenge. So we were, we were happy and we did get students from every grade. So we, we hit a goal there. And when it came to the raffle tickets, we gave, we cut up 1,488 raffle tickets. So that was exciting. And students on our website, we did explain that you can get more raffle tickets for doing something versus other, like the Buster Challenge, every challenge you did, those are worth two. So it was, it was fun. We let them know there was a different way to earn. And we had one second grader with 84 raffle tickets, which really was our highest. Although we did have, we did have quite a few up there having between 30 and 60 raffle tickets. So some of those kept going all summer long.
And then for some grade level stats, our second graders had the most tickets overall. They earned 383 raffle tickets. And fourth grade had the most iReady lessons completed at 207. So 207 lessons on their path were completed. And Seesaw, the second graders had 47 posts. And kindergarten was the top grade level, our incoming Ks with 63 entries in Google Classroom. So it was wonderful to be able to get them to be a part of it as well.
All right, and we did, as I emailed families, letting them know they won prizes and I'd be sending slime home with their children, just giving them a heads up. They, we did get some feedback to us. So we, we took a few little snips of it. So one of our students, this was actually the student, our eighth grader, who was very involved. She said, thank you for, thank, thank you for all yours and Mrs. Sullivan's help with all these fun adventures.
And a fifth grade parent, summer adventures was a fun and motivating way for my son to remain engaged in learning over the summer months.
We had, thank you for all you do, my family appreciates it so much from a kindergarten and second grade parent.
And then for students in grades two and four, their parents said this was a fantastic idea to keep them engaged over the summer.
And then we had the girls enjoyed the different ideas you had for Buster's Challenges. They were very motivated by the idea of raffle prizes and look forward to earning tickets.
And finally, Jackson was ecstatic during the assembly today, which is actually exciting to hear because during a live stream, you don't know who's there. You don't see the other side, so that was great to hear.
Yep, and we are very excited. We have a few of the photos. This is just a tiny bit of some of the work that got submitted and some of the things that the kids were doing. And we're going to share it with you now. Mr. Sullivan is going to do some magic on his end.
That was great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments about summer learning adventures of Bolton Center School?
I'll just make a comment. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'll just make a comment that I was very thankful, we didn't do it as much as I had hoped to do it. But we did have a place to go to find some easy lessons when it was time to kind of get back into it a little bit. So I do hope it continues and great job. Thank you for putting that all.
Yeah, absolutely. I was going to say something similar. Very impressive. Those engagement numbers are awesome, especially the increase.
Absolutely. And I want to commend Jessica and Becky. They worked so hard on it all year long, coming up with different ideas. And then COVID hit and it was like a five alarm fire. How do we turn this around and still make it work? And, and they worked so hard to, to make it a great experience for our kids. And I, I want to commend them for, for the amazing work that they did. Well done. Well done. Thank you. And there were many moments where in many of our Zoom meetings, getting those little video, those pictures would ding at me. And then I was like, oh, okay, they're having fun. Kids are outside having fun and doing things. So it was wonderful. So we enjoyed it and we, you know, we had plans that, you know, we could only roll out so much so fast. So we have, we're ready for next year already.
That was just great. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. So we are on to federal and state COVID funding update. If there are any, if there are not any other comments for Jessica and Becky. All right. So for the ESSER grant, elementary and secondary school emergency relief, Bolton Public Schools was awarded $17,146. This number is based on our Title I funding. So that is how that, these monies were divvied out across the state. The award period started on the 13th of March, 2020 and went through the 30th of September, 2021. Our grant request was to go towards the purchase of 54.26. Not really sure how you actually do that with a touchscreen Chromebook, but that's what it turned out to be with a per item cost of $316 to address our urgent need to provide equal access to technology at home for all students during distance learning as a result of the pandemic. Our grant was awarded and we had originally had those monies come out of open choice for, towards those Chromebooks. So that portion was reclassified out of open choice and into the ESR, ESSER grant. And we have already received those monies. And those were purchases that happened last fiscal year. Federal and state COVID funding, coronavirus relief fund. Bolton Public Schools award was based, well, all districts awards were based on two surveys that the CSD sent to superintendents. One was completed on the 17th of July and the other on the 5th of August. And those surveys were basically asking us to project, give a best guess, that's really is really what I want to say, on costs that we thought we might incur. And to be honest, really at that point, we really didn't know. I'm going to be really honest. We didn't even have a plan yet for our return to school. We were working on it. So we received, I have to minimize this so I can see it. We received three buckets of money. But in total, $133,826. I want to be clear that we have not received the monies yet. We have to apply for the monies. So we were awarded $2,043 allotment to go towards personnel-related supports with regards to cleaning PPE, health and safety. You'll notice that's not a large amount. I gave a much larger amount. I'll offer that. Non-personnel-related supports really is our cleaning PPE and health and safety. We were allotted $94,000. And for non-personnel-related supports for transportation, we were awarded $37,783. The award period is, goes all the way back to the first of March in 2020 and it goes until the 30th of December of 2020. We completed the grant application for the $94,000 and we are waiting for the CSD to process requests for reallocation of the $2,043 and the $37,783. I had, we had been told, superintendents have been told on a call with Commissioner Cardona several weeks ago that those monies were going to be allowed to be reallocated. Then there was word that, well, we hope to be able to do that. This afternoon, every superintendent in the state received word that in fact we will be allowed to request a reallocation for both of those pieces. We have been notified, Bolton has, of CSD first level approval for the $94,000 drawdown request that we have asked for. There are several levels of approval in this process right now, which is not always the way with grants. But OPM is overseeing these monies, which is why there are other levels involved in the approval process. Next slide, please. So as I shared under the personnel-related supports, we wrote right into the grant application that funding was not needed in this category and we were requesting a reallocation. For the non-personnel-related supports for cleaning PPE, health and safety, the 94,000, 54,160 of this, we applied for, for the rental of the air conditioning units for two months at Bolton Center School. The purchase of air scrubbers, two at BCS and two at Bolton High School. There's one in each nurse's office and one in each isolation room. And we ended up purchasing them because it was more cost effective for us to purchase them than it was for us to rent them. The cost of those was $10,200. And we're very, very happy that we have them because it is cold and flu season right now. And there's a little bit of a stomach bug going around and those are also symptoms of COVID. So anytime a child exhibits symptoms like that, they are sent to the nurse and oftentimes are sent directly to the isolation room, waiting for a parent to pick them up, to then take them to see a doctor to determine whether it's one thing or get a test and to determine if in fact it's COVID. And lastly, the desk shields for students and staff, that's not the full amount cost for desk shields. But that amount as well. And then we do not need the money for transportation. So again, in our request, we put that we did not need funding in this category and a reallocation would be requested. So that is my report on the funds and the information I have to date. Are there questions for me on that piece? Okay. I hope to have more information next month where I hope to be able to, hopefully the state has come up with their process for how the additional funds will be reallocated. So I can report out about our application for that as well. They often say it's coming in a couple of days and then it's coming in a week and then it's coming in two weeks. And then it might be three. So I hope I have information to share next month. Thank you. That ends my report this evening.
Thank you, everyone. Under unfinished, unfinished business, we have policies, second read. Chris, do you want to do an overview or should we just move through?
Yeah, well, we did an overview last time, but if, if anyone needs a reminder of anything, I'm happy to find my notes. But I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion. Let's see.
I think we can, I, I think we can move them all together.
That's what I was going to ask. Yeah. If we could do them all together, it'll be. So I'll, I'll make a motion to approve policy 1010 C-19, 1470. And all of these will have C-19 at the end of them. So I'll just skip that going forward. Policy 5135, 1240, 1250, 1330, 1455, 4112.5, 4118.4, 5112, 5134, 5141, 5141.1R, 6172.6, 9321, 9322, and 9325.
Do we have a second?
I would like to second.
Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Passes unanimously. Under new business, more policies, first read. Chris?
All right. Thank you, Sue. So again, the vast majority of these policies in the 5,000 series first read are ones that we are asking to delete, mostly because they're either no longer required or they're covered by other existing policies. So briefly, 5111 dot one, foreign exchange students. This policy is not required. It also doesn't take into consideration any issues related to immigration, security. Our lights finally came back. And liability. Policy 5118, non-resident attendance. Again, it's not required because we only take tuition students if we have an agreement with the sending district. And that agreement with the sending district covers what the policy would cover. Policy 5124, reporting to parents. Now lights from that again. Again, it's not a required policy. Policy 5131 dot one, bus conduct. This is already covered by our student discipline policy. Policy 5131 dot 11, video cameras on bus. This information will be, is it, is it already in the student handbook, Kristen, or it's going to be in the student handbook?
There is information in the student handbook and we will make sure it continues to be in student handbook.
Perfect. So because of that, it's not required as a board level policy. 5131 dot seven, weapons and dangerous instruments. Again, this is already stuff that's covered in the student discipline policy. 5131 dot 81, electronic devices. This is one that we will eliminate because it's covered in another policy, namely 5135, student use of private technological devices, which I think we just approved. Yes. So we just approved the new policy there. 5133, cyberbullying. Again, this is up for elimination because it's already covered in our safe school climate plan, which is policy 5131 dot 911. Policy 514122, communicable and infectious diseases. This is up for elimination because it's covered in policy 5141, health screenings and assessments. And again, that's a policy that we just adopted and an updated version of. Policy 5141 dot 231, psychotropic drug use up for elimination because it's covered in policy 4118 dot 234, prohibition on recommendations for psychotropic drugs. Policy 5141 dot 24, staff with HIV AIDS-related complex or AID. The attorneys recommend that we eliminate this one because it's not required by Connecticut law. Policy 5141 dot 27, first aid, emergency medical care. This is already covered by policy 1430, which is currently up to date. Policy 5141 dot four, reporting of child abuse, neglect and sexual assault. Again, marked for elimination because it is covered in this case by two other policies. 4120, reports of suspected abuse or neglect of children or sexual assault of students by school employees. And policy 5145 dot 511, child sexual abuse and assault policy and reporting procedure. Next is policy 5145 dot six. This is the last marked for deletion, student grievance procedures. It's already addressed in policy 5145 dot four, which again is an up-to-date policy. Then we have three policies that we are asking to revise. Policy 5123, promotion and retention. This is one where we're moving from an older policy to the shipment model policy. It'll also be renumbered to become policy 6205. Policies 5125, confidentiality and access to education records. This is being revised to include student data privacy and other recent legislative changes. And then lastly, policy 5141 dot 21, administering medications. This is being updated to include latest requirements on the state and federal level as well as provision for use of Narcan in schools. So those are submitted for first read and we'll, we vote next month on those.
Thank you very much. And move on to resignations. We received one resignation this month, actually happened this week, from Corey Percy, world language teacher at Bolton Center School. And she will be leaving sometime within the next month or so. And we want to thank her for her dedicated years of service to the Bolton Public Schools. So we are in the process of trying to find additional world language teacher. See how that goes. That is all I have for resignations. So I think you're mute. Sue, I think you're muted.
I was, I was talking away. Is there anything for future business? No, okay. Motion to adjourn.
All at once now. I guess I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
You, I guess everybody wanted to hang out tonight.
I'll second it.
Second.
Thank you, Scott.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Absentions? All right, we adjourned at eight o'clock.
Thank you, everybody.